Alderman, five o'clock for November the seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. If you'll join me in prayer and pledge.
Heavenly Father, it's with great pleasure that we're able to stand before our citizens again and do the business as we represent them, Father. We just thank you for the many blessings you share with us, Father. We just ask you to continue to watch over each one of us, each home represented and each citizen, Father. We ask you to bless all of our employees, that you allow us to continue to do the work of our citizens. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A roll call. Patrick?
Here.
Pete?
Here.
Donald?
Here.
Mike?
Here.
Tim?
Here.
Angie?
Here.
And Bernie?
Present.
We have a full quorum tonight. We will go on, we have no public hearings tonight. Amount announcements, presentations, proclamations. I've got two things. Saturday, November the twenty-fifth is Small Business Saturday, and I would encourage everybody, all of our citizens and those that don't even live in Long Beach, to come down and let's shop Long Beach. Let's make it a profitable day for our small business owners here in Long Beach. It's a, it's a great thing that we could represent them. So, and I've got one more thing, and I want to come down. I've got some things I need to say and some people I need to thank personally. So if y'all allow me as a board to go down, I'd appreciate that.
Allow you. Walking down there?
Neither can he.
Hey, he's done, hey, he walked up steps today.
Boy, everybody jumping on him tonight.
I, I've got, I'm not talking just to you, but I'm talking to those who may watch us online. But I've got several things, and most of all, I've got several people I want to thank. First of all, I want to thank my Lord and Savior for allowing me to be in remission. And I say, hallelujah, thank you, Lord. Y'all, that, yeah. I've had many prayers throughout this event. I think it was Mark Twain, and I'll try to quote him, said, said, I can't remember how it goes. It's challenges, it's how we face the challenges that makes life interesting. However, it's how we overcome those challenges that makes life meaningful. And certainly without my faith and many prayers, I wouldn't be here. I want to thank our board here, our attorney, our people, our department heads, for carrying on this as I was out. I was totally out too, believe me. I say now I'm about eighty percent back to where I need to be, but I'm seventy percent better than where I was at, and thank you, Lord. I appreciate that. To our aldermen, thank y'all individually. Y'all don't know what this means to me to have been here and to have to step back and for y'all doing the job you have done. Donald Fraser, thank you for stepping up for the job that you've done with these aldermen to continue the city operations and make things continue, continue on. I appreciate you.
My pleasure.
To the department heads, all the way over to our engineering, each one of y'all. Stacy Dahl, I can't say enough about her. She's our city clerk. She kept Donald in line when I couldn't be here too. And I owe her a great debt of gratitude to Kenny for keeping us where we're at and moving us forward each day, to each of you department heads. Thank y'all so much. And as I said earlier, life is interesting. We face those challenges, and it's how we deal with them and what makes our life meaningful. I've had many, many, many prayers lifted up for me, and I couldn't be here without those prayers and without my Lord and Savior answering those prayers and putting me here in total remission and allowed me to carry on and us as a board to continue to answer those challenges that face us as we represent our citizens here. And I think it's now that I'm ready to get back into the game and let's see if we can make meaning and meaningful decisions for our citizens. But I say thank y'all for allowing me this few minutes. I had said when I went out, I'll be back. I'm back. Thank y'all for that, that's a few minutes there, and we'll move on. We have no more presentations, proclamations. Do we have any amendments to the municipal docket? All right, here none, excuse me.
Mr. Mayor, I think we need to add one regarding the Veterans Day Parade.
Okay.
Just for clarification.
As an amendment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, where we want to put that under?
Uh, just, we can do it under new business number twelve.
Okay.
Is that your motion, Alderman?
Yes.
Second. We've got a motion, a second, to add new business concerning the
Veterans Day Parade.
Veterans Day Parade, to be on there, item twelve. We've got a motion, second. All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, anything else for amendments? Here or none, we'll move forward to approve the amendments of the mayor and board of Alderman for the October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three regular and executive session and October the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three work session. Got a motion, a second?
Move.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion, any discussion? Here or none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have planning and development commission, October twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three regular. Motion, second, for discussion?
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second for discussion. Do I hear any discussion? The only thing I'll comment is we've had some short-term rentals that two of them had Mississippi tax IDs, and I think that that's important, that we consider that when we move forward, any more discussion only. So here, no more discussion. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have approved docket of claims number one-one-zero-two-three. Motion, a second, discussion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Here or none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have an unfinished business, short-term rental commit, committee. Are we ready to move forward with this, or do we have to, so we know where we're at? Donald, I'm going to defer to you for discussion on this.
So first of all, I'll make the, the motion to, if I can get a second.
Second.
With, and so, discussion part of this is, we, in our, in our last meeting and in our work session, we talked about setting up a committee with the aldermen and members of the community to work through this ordinance to correct it. We kind of left it at the last meeting with all the aldermen coming back with a nominee from the public and forming this and then kind of setting up some meetings so we can work through this. We are on a timetable though, and I'm sure other members will discuss this because we lifted the moratorium on, on short-term rentals until January one of next year.
Okay.
Well, we're in November. It's not a lot of time to fix it.
Absolutely.
So, so with that being said, you know, we can either form this and then have our first meeting, and then the board can decide if we want to extend that or, you know, how we want to go and what direction.
Okay.
So.
All right. Did y'all discuss the number of members of, of the board of aldermen you would like to put on there?
Well, I, I believe, and I'm going to leave it up to the other members, I believe the max that we can have is three.
Three, that's correct.
It's going to be three, and if the mayor can participate, will participate, it will be three and the mayor.
Okay. And then one, one external person?
From?
From public?
Well, we did it as each ward or each alderman. That's a lot. I do understand.
Well, part of this was to help us locate and find short-term rental, people running them illegally. That's kind of was the basis, almost like a neighborhood watch style.
Right.
To help the planning office kind of find some of these people that are not registered.
Is there?
But it's also, it's, it's, it's very important that we look at how many and where they are and not oversaturating. So this committee is, is a very important committee in what we're asking it to do. So, yeah, each one of us.
Did y'all, did y'all see any parameters as far as what you would discuss in this? You know, when you got such a large committee, you got three, four, and then, then you got seven, you got eleven people there, and they could be individuals pushing their own agenda. And we need to make sure, understanding the timeframe that we under, that we need to be able to move quickly on making decisions. And I agree, we need somebody out there policing from each ward and saying, who's got this and are they illegal or illegal? So I just.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to just kind of intervene with the opinion of this is actually, you know, just like our planning commission or any one of the other boards, a recommendation. It's still up to this governing body up here.
We're still, y'all, we are still a voting board here that will make that decision.
Yes, sir.
My concern is if we get too big, we're not, we're not going to come out with some clean decisions to bring to the full board to articulate and put forward on there. And I know we've got some guidelines and some timeframes and some, some different perspectives from other cities that we've brought in that's already done some action on this, and I think that's vitally important to us. But I don't want to do anything that's going to slow us down. If this is the mind of the board, they want eleven members, let's move forward as soon as we can with, with bringing forth those recommendations from each board member that we're going to put on there. Let's put this to work right now.
Yeah.
George, I, I want to make one comment. Most of us, I think I'm speaking for most of us, have been approached by particular individuals seeking to be on this board or this panel. I think that's a good thing. Secondly, I think, yes, that's kind of a large number, but it also prevents an individual or two from pushing their own agenda.
Right.
So, that being said.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm open for an amendment to the, I know I'm not saying that correctly, to the, to the motion.
To the motion?
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
To move forward with this naming tonight, these individuals, if y'all are prepared to do that, to name these individuals, let's go ahead and form that committee tonight and let's, let's get some action going so we can move forward this and be, be prepared to have something before the end of the year.
Mr. Mayor, if I can interrupt, I, I think that was the plan, and that's my error for not explaining that to you.
Okay.
The board is, was.
Y'all prepared to do it?
Was instructed to come tonight.
Was that included in your motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And that was included in the second over here, Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We have a mistake.
All right. Kenny, you ready to take those down? Because I'm going to start with Patrick and go, go left to right, and we're going to.
I am.
All right. Patrick, you have a person?
Yes, Ms. Michelle Dasher.
Okay. And will you furnish through email, each of y'all furnish through email the contact to information to Kenny? And then, we've only got three aldermen can, can meet, and we'll stake that up after we get everybody, all the citizens on there. All right, Pete, you got yours?
Mine is Mr. Fisher, lives on Alvarado, and Angie has already his contact information. I believe I shared that with either you or Kenny already. All right. Oh.
It's yours.
Mine is Mr. Blaine Sutton, and I have the information here to pass along.
Okay. Mike Brown?
Sheldon Jones.
Okay. I think several of us know her for her participation in Sea Santa Celebration and other events.
I didn't get a yes or no, so I just went ahead.
Went and do it?
Yeah. Thank you, Sheldon.
I was wondering why she was backpedaling out there. Thank you, Sheldon.
Tom Carpenter.
Huh?
Tom Carpenter.
Tom Carpenter, okay. Angie?
Mr. Mark Walker, who has actually had conversations with what Pastor Shan did with there, so I'm very excited to appoint him.
Okay. And Mr. Parker?
John Sigifor.
John Sigifor. Sigifus. Sigifus.
Yeah, okay, you can say it.
I know John, so that's a good one.
Mr. Mayor, you would also have a, an appointment as well, if you would like, if you want to hold off on yours.
I would like.
Because I made that phone call for you.
Yeah. And I would, I would like to go ahead, and if he denies, we'll come back and I'll ask someone. Philip LeBlanc is who I would like to put on there. Okay? And now the, the three aldermen, I'm, I'm hoping y'all have discussed this.
We have, we know two of them.
I know two of them?
We do, Patrick and Mr. Bernie.
And me.
And Angie. Okay, that's the three. All right, we've got all the information here.
Thank you.
Oh, and that's, we've got a motion, second. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Here or none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're going to move forward then to the inner bulkhead and southern quay for discussion. I'd like to have a motion and a second for that discussion if I can.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. David, I'm hoping you're prepared. I think, Mikey, you might have brought this up at the la, at the last board meetings, as I saw in the, in the minutes, that we, we've had, had meetings, and David, I would like for you to, to maybe discuss what transpired in the meeting. I think we sent out emails to each one of the aldermen, and if, if we need any more discussion, if you'll recap what we've, what we've set out and where we're at with these additions.
Okay. We actually had a, a, a meeting with the contractor on the southeast bulkhead last week and kind of discussed then how they might be able to, to make effort now that will facilitate these three future bulkhead projects, and we're working on that. It'll probably be a change order. It's going to be probably a sizable change order, more than a hundred thousand is what we're, is what I'm guessing right now, to do seven test piles that will prepare us for the three future bulkhead projects. And that'll be something that they can work towards, and, and we're working on that with the contractor right that, right now, to get that in position for you guys. That information will serve to facilitate these two remaining bulkhead projects and the eastern bulkhead. So really, I think what this was tabled was a letter from us saying that we're ready. If, if you guys want to move forward with an advertisement schedule, we could do that. There is still some question about the funding available. We've got some estimated costs that it's probably twelve to twelve million or so for the three walls, twelve to fifteen million for these three walls total. I think that's a little bit more than y'all have in the, in the kitty, but I'm not sure what that funding status is. Not sure if I'm answering, if I'm, if I'm giving you what you're looking for.
Yeah, yeah, I think you have. You gave us, you know, something that we've discussed, and, and I can't remember, no, no, I remember Patrick being there.
I was there.
And Bernie was there, but I don't think any, Angie was there, yes. When we had that meeting to discuss this, I think what we need to do is, is get back from you and, and get with Kenny, and y'all work up what our funding source is and how much we have available. Unfortunately, one of the situations we called in, just like everybody else, is, is the inflation has, has driven us, you know, from the time we estimated this and requested funds and received those funds, to a new day where we're looking at probably a third increase in price.
Okay.
Maybe a little less.
Understood.
Maybe twenty-five percent, twenty, twenty-five percent, but probably closer to a third. So I'd like to get that information back to us before the board for the next meeting, and also any information we gather and garner from this to send out to each one of the aldermen, so they'll have that, and that information in their hand. It may be, may be that we have to cut back on one of the walls to be able to get all three of them. And it would be a decision that, that the city, that this board will have to make on which one do we cut back on that would be the least damage to the inner harbor until we get further along the way, so.
Okay. In, in support of that, it kind of plays well together right now. We're, we're going to play well together, I think. We got the eastern bulkhead bids next Tuesday.
Right.
So we'll know next Tuesday how much that real cost is, and we can use that, I think, to pretty accurately project what the remaining walls will cost, so.
Right. And we'd anticipate us getting that so we could accurately forecast this business model and what we've got coming forward for the other two walls.
Right.
So.
Okay.
All right, any, Mikey?
So the inner wall and the southern quay, though, is still FEMA, correct?
Southern quay isn't.
I thought Andy Corr told us it was, you, when you and me met, when you and me met up top.
FEMA would only be anything that was there prior.
Right. And that, that didn't include, we had funding for the southern quay.
They, they have really not recognized much damage to the southern quay.
Right.
As FEMA, you know, as, as per what I understand for FEMA, the inner bulkhead, they, they do recognize a little bit of damage, a small portion of it.
Okay.
So there is some overlap with FEMA perhaps on that inner bulkhead.
And that's why I was trying to get, I wasn't trying to not answer your question, but they was, they was, there's variables in there.
Do a lightness on those?
Yeah.
Next.
Sir.
Yeah, we could get those down to a, to a document that has drawings and specific cutoffs within these things and have them emailed out to each one of y'all. I think it's important that we understand what FEMA might do and what we might have to do for the exterior portion of the harbor, so.
Have we heard the time's up on our?
Well, our time was up expecting an answer from them.
That's what I'm talking about.
But they got the leeway to give themselves an extension.
So we haven't heard anything?
So they've given themselves an extension.
Six days as of today, and we've not heard.
Right.
So do we have somebody we can call?
We have been in contact with MEMA. That's who we have to go through.
We have to, yeah. We have to go through MEMA, of course, as you know, and then they'll forward that on up. And, you know, the, the way the situation is, we answer to them, they don't answer to us, and we've got to wait for them to tell us, well, we gave ourselves a thirty-day extension or a sixty-day extension. Well, we don't like this. We want, we want, we want that ten point three million dollars you offer us up front to, to fix the inside of the harbor.
I mean, can't, can't Steve, could you write a letter, being our attorney, to urge a request?
They're going to laugh at us.
We, we certainly could, but.
And we go on, on file as writing and submitting and saying that we're waiting.
We could, as, as Griff has stated, you know, they're, they're certainly aware of, of the ninety-day time for which they were supposed to respond, and as I understand, they didn't give him any indication of when they would respond or where they were at in their evaluation. For the purposes of just documented, hey, the time's expired, we could do it. I, I don't know that has much impact. We're unfortunately going to, in a kind of a sit and wait situation with them.
But I'm just thinking long-term, if this just keeps lingering as a document to show that we have.
It, it. It, it, it does, we, we formalized the appeal, which is their response we're waiting on, so we've protected ourselves legally with, with the appeal. It, it won't hurt to say, hey, we're, we're anxiously awaiting your response, but-
I would like to make a motion to do that.
Mrs. Angie, I think at this point, um, until we get some notification through MEMA from FEMA, uh, letting us know whether we're going to arbitration or not, uh, I'm not trying to kill what you're saying, but at some point, if we don't go to arbitration, the city may want to think about suing FEMA. And I might wait to that time to have our council write that type of letter.
Yeah, and I thought, yeah, I knew, y'all, y'all did, uh, go to, uh, to arbitration on this.
We, we put-
That we, that's an option for us.
We put that as an option, but we haven't heard anything as of right now, and everything we do has to go through MEMA at this point.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, y'all, y'all did the appeal, which we're waiting on right now, but you also at the same time voted as a board to do arbitration.
Absolutely did.
Am I correct?
Well, they said that-
Comes down to that.
But, yeah, and they also said that the appeal and arbitration was gonna be done at the same time.
Right.
That's what we voted on.
You can either, I think your option is to either file another appeal or go straight to arbitration.
Arbitration.
You got two.
And I think the board kind of, I don't know if we voted, but I think it was kind of the, I'd, you know, the, our path forward was arbitration after-
I would say let's get clarification and we'll, and we'll come back at the next meeting and, and with clarification on that, and we could get with MEMA, uh, through Andicore, uh, who is carrying a big load on this for us, uh, I hope it's big enough. But, uh, we get those clarifications, clarifications and get back to us and we'll move forward to the next meeting on some decisions. And once we receive information, uh, Chief Scaly will, will-
Mayor and the board, uh, Andicore did make, or write a letter yesterday, as we were at day ninety-five. They wrote a letter to MEMA yesterday, haven't heard anything back as of today.
So, next, next, next meeting, we should have some information back to share with the board, and if we get it back, uh, in a reasonable timeframe, we can go ahead and send out an email to every, everybody here. Uh, y'all okay with that? Okay, so we'll, we'll go ahead and move forward. Uh, that completes unfinished business. Next, we have new business, uh, we got a special event app for the Carnival Association of Long Beach for Jeep Agra. That's on a Friday and Saturday, uh, the twelfth and thirteenth of January, I need a motion and second discussion.
A mo- second.
Got a motion, second discussion, do we have any discussion at all?
Uh, just making sure everybody did see the insurance was turned in for both, uh, of these events.
Okay.
I did not have a chance to send that out.
Okay, I just wanted to ma- make the record, note the record.
Yeah. For both those events, alright, got a motion and second, any further discussion on this event?
No, sir.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? Next, we have a special event app again for the Carnival Association of Long Beach for the Mardi Gras Parade, that will be on, uh, Saturday, February the, what's it, third or fifth?
Third.
Third?
Third.
Uh, of twenty-four, we got a motion and a second, uh, we have any further discussion about this? Hear none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? Next, we have a motion, uh, excuse me, a waiver of rec center fees for naval construction group, uh-
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and second, any discussion? Hear none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? And now for our second, number three under new business.
Yep.
Uh, mobile, mobile, mobile vending ordinance, uh, motion and second for discussion?
Motion.
Second.
You got a motion and second, discussion?
Discussion. This is the, uh, ordinance that we have been working on, we had one or two work sessions on it, and we sent it to our council, and he sent it back and said everything looks good, so I'd like to, do we, is this a resolution we have to do, or?
Well, it's an, it's adopting an ordinance, it has to be a roll call vote.
Public, oh, okay.
I got, as I read through it, I come up with one question on page six, and I'll have to refresh my mind, uh, what this is. It's something simple. A couple of things, the sale of alcohol beverages prohibited unless approved, and we need to put something here, it has to be approved by the mayor and board of aldermen, or their designated agent. Can we do something like that, do y'all, y'all agree? Somebody's gotta approve it.
Sure.
I, I don't see a problem with that, I'll, I'll make that motion.
Alright.
If there's, i- if, so amending the original motion with one change-
Page six, item ten. Page six, number ten. This is page six, item ten on there.
Do them all in one?
I got you.
If you have a couple of things, we could do it all in one.
Yeah, I got one more, Donald, I was gonna, I was gonna say that for-
I withdraw my motion.
Alright, we'll continue on. Only other thing I found, and I think it's vitally important to us, cause I've heard Bob Paul and his crew and Public Works, Mike, and y'all's crew talk about the disposal of garbage. I wanna make sure, and it's been in here, that the, these vendors are responsible disposal of their own garbage, that they have to have a designated disposal slot at their, their cost, not fill up our cans or our dumpsters. Uh, I, I would like to see that, just, it just says the vendor shall be responsible for the proper disposal of refuse, trash, and litter, and I just wanna make sure they're not filling up our stuff, that they've gotta have something to dispose of their own.
Motion.
Alright, we got a-
You'll add that too, Donald?
Uh, yes, sir, I'll amend, uh, I'll second Bernie's alternative, uh, amended motion there.
First motion? You're gonna amend it? amended motion? Alright, so we've got a, amended motion by, uh, Mr. Parker and, and second by Mr. Fraser to add those two items to this. Uh, the only question I got is Steve noting those two, can we go ahead and do a roll call vote and have those put in there and move forward?
Yes, ten and twelve, the ones you want the amendments on?
Yes, ten and twelve.
Yes, sir.
Oh.
Ten and sixteen.
I meant ten and sixteen, I'm sorry, uh-
Fifteen addresses the trash.
Fifteen.
Fifteen addressed-
You had sixteen.
I've got it, I've got, mine is on page six, item sixteen, uh, responsibility for proper disposal.
Look at fifteen.
Fifteen, I love that.
Twelve also talks about trash removal, too.
Well, that just means they've got to maintain it within, within, uh, shall contain all refuse, trash, and litter within the mobile food preparation vehicle.
Got you.
Doesn't have anything to say about why they're gonna dispose it. They could maintain it in there and take their little cans and go dump it in our bigger cans, and I think they need to have provisions to do that. Oh. That's, that's all I, I had, but I wanted to make sure I brought that up. So, we have any more discussion? Alright, uh, roll call vote, Patrick?
Aye.
Pete?
Yes.
Donald?
Aye.
Mike?
Yes.
Tim?
Aye.
Angie?
Yes.
And Bernie?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Alright, uh, that was mobile, that was the second, number three, we offer that, let's go to the first four, is the, the wheelway, motion and second for discussion?
Motion.
Mo- second.
And we got a second on second and discussion?
We had, at the last work session, I think we had asked, uh-
Cruz, Joe.
No.
Chris.
Chris.
Christian.
Christian.
Oh, Christian.
Christian Prius.
Thank you.
Cruz, Prius.
Uh, to include this in our Gateway Project, and I don't think we need to spend twenty-five thousand dollars right now and then a year later come tear it up.
Yeah, I got, I got some thoughts on this, how much do we, when we get, uh, someone that, uh, that wants to pay us instead of putting a sidewalk in front of the house and we approve it, how much do they pay us?
The in lieu is, uh, nine hundred-
Nine twenty-five, isn't it?
Nine twen- max of nine twenty-five, forty-five, excuse me.
Nine hundred and forty-five dollars, and what's the size of that sidewalk?
S- it's seventy-five feet.
At, how, what's the width?
Four feet, is ADA compliant, four feet.
Four feet is what we require.
I know where you're getting at.
This, this has, this sidewalk has a lot more detail, though, you have to put footers in it.
I, I agree, you gotta put footers in there, that, but, but my point is, are we charging too little or are they charging too much?
Think this is kind of a different ballgame being on.
I, I agree.
Way different.
I'm talking about the ballgame we're playing, I wanna know how much it costs to get in the game.
Well, we should be in the game on the Gateway Project.
On the wheelway.
I'm not debating, I'm not, no, I'm not against that. I just wanna know, are we behind on what we should be charging? Now, I've talked about inflation earlier, are we behind on what we should be charging for in lieu?
You cannot get that foot in your, in front of your house for nine hundred bucks, uh, uh, no.
Thank you, thank you, so-
You cannot.
Especially with concrete prices going up again.
I wanna, what was, your, your, your motion was to what? Are you just in discussion on this motion?
I'm discussion, but I can make a motion.
Well, and what I would suggest is within this motion to, to approve this going over to the Gateway Project for a cost estimate, that we also add in that we look at the cost of what we're charging in lieu sidewalks, for in lieu sidewalks. Y'all, or, or Steve, do we, can we do that in there, or can we add, do we need to add it later?
You want, you wanna add it to your talking?
He wants to, let me see if I can, uh, help you and make sure I'm on the same page. He wants to also look at ordinance, our sidewalk ordinance, along with having Christian, I mean, uh, Christian Prius look at putting the, the wheelway in our Gateway Project.
Absolutely, absolutely.
We did discuss that.
Discuss what?
Putting the wheelway was paramount, and, and Paramount in his presentation, that wa- that was something unique to us and that needs to be incorporated, a permanent structure with the Gateway Project.
Yeah, yeah, we all discussed that, but we haven't approved that as a board.
He's coming back to us.
Yeah.
But we've got to approve him adding that in to it, cause it was a standalone separate project-
Yeah, let's do it.
Outside of what his project was.
He didn't tell us that.
It, I mean, he hadn't-
And we're giving and taking some other things, so, I mean-
I don't think we have a final, I think we could add that in before-
Needs to be added to him, give him direction to add that in and make that happen, and give us a cost estimate for adding that in.
So you need a motion on it?
I'm not here tonight to argue and disagree with y'all on stuff y'all discussed beforehand. My thoughts when I looked at this is, man, we probably need to look at how much we're charging for-
Yeah.
For sidewalks. I'm, I'm all in for, for Christian, adding that in and looking at that for us and giving us a price. Uh, it's up to y'all to vote on what you wanna do, we couldn't give him any authority to do anything until we got board approval to move that forward. While we're giving that board approval for that-
Mayor, if I may, my recollection and the board members will be better than mine, is that, as Angie discussed, he's done some presentation on that in the past. I don't know what action you, you wanna take tonight, but if, maybe if Mike could, could reach out to Christian Prius and get them to update us on exactly what it was they proposed, including the cost,
and whether it could be included in the existing, um, Gateway contract, then maybe at the next board meeting, you could act on that. If it can be, if it can't be, then you're looking at the cost of a standalone project, and that gives you a little more information.
Right, and, and talking to-
As I recall, he may have already done those calculations and, and estimations. You don't think so?
Mm-mm, he never did the, it was Joe who did the estim- doing the estimate, on them to do it.
Joe who, Joe, Joe-
Joe and David.
Public Works and David, David worked on that. It's not been that, it's not been approved, anything by the board, and I don't wanna call him and say it's been approved without his board voting on it. And that's why I'm asking the board to vote to approve us, approaching Christian, to give us a price on adding that into the Gateway Project. And while we're doing that, I mean, Angie, if you could find words in the minutes that y'all voted on this, I'll be glad to move forward what you got.
What, what this was?
You keep looking at me like I've lost it, and I probably have.
Alright, he- here's what this was, we had a work session with a presentation over there.
I was here.
Okay, and, you know, we came back and we, and we told him we wanted to incorporate that into it. And he says, okay, I'm gonna bring, and he's gonna get everything together and bring it back to us. We did not vote on it, you're right.
No.
But-
Didn't vote on anything.
We didn't vote on anything in the work session, so that's what we was, I think that's where our confusion is. Do we need to make a motion, or just wait for him to come back with everything and then make the motion?
Yes.
That's-
My confusion came in with voting on what is on the agenda, which Mikey voted to not do this, and then, then you started a different conversation, so I was just all discombobulated on the whole conversation, cause we need to vote on what is at hand.
What I was asking was, the basically leading up to, why is our sidewalk so cheap? And I fully understand, Tim, that you got, you got to have some deep footings down there to keep from sand eroding up under them and dropping the concrete out from under them, I completely understand that. But the thing is, it is, if we're doing a four cu- four-foot minimum sidewalk in width and a seventy-five-foot length, let's go ahead and vote on this, this, and I'll bring that up under my head and ask y'all to vote on it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, uh, make a, a substitute motion. I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, approach Christian Prius as a board, uh, to give us a price, uh, including the wheelway in, uh, the Gateway Project, and then that would be my first motion.
We got a substitute motion, we have a second? Pete, second?
Yep.
Uh, only thing I would ask is, do you want them to use David's, uh-
Using, using, yes, I'll correct my, I'll correct my, uh, I'll amend it, saying that using the drawings and the, uh, information that we have supplied by our engineer-
Okay.
Um, to give us a price, that, that's my motion there.
That, your substitute motion includes all that?
That can be as well.
And we have a second, Pete, you, your second contains that, any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries?
Mr. Mayor, if I can interject, uh, one other motion that, uh, and I know I am out of order here on our, uh, on our docket, but I, I would like us to take a, a review of the sidewalk ordinance, um, in our future, in the next meeting.
Okay, got a motion to do that?
Second, aye.
Now, I realize that's not a, a, uh, agenda item here. Uh, Steve, can we go ahead and do that now? Or do I could bring it up under mine and we could bring it up?
I, I could get some numbers tomorrow on sidewalks and put it on the agenda for next week to discuss.
Would you, do you just wanna estimate the, per foot of what a sidewalk costs?
I can get probably some per foot.
Think that's what we're trying to say.
What's concrete gone, what's concrete go, gone up in the last two years?
Yes.
You know, what about labor? So, yeah, Donald, you alright with that? Okay, alright, so we're gonna move forward then to the, to the next item, it's a tree removal, uh, on five oh one North Seal, we've been furnished by Public Works Pictures, and I think Mike, Michael, you, no, another Mike, you wanting to address that, or, or, you know, the board, do y'all have any questions? You could see the tree there, uh, and talking to, my talking to Joe, uh, I would suggest we, we go on our easement line and cut that limb off that goes over, we're having trucks hitting it right now, and vehi- you know, larger vehicles hitting those limbs there, and I would suggest that either Public Works try to cut it, or we contract with someone to, to take that on out-
Mayor.
Before we have a problem.
Let's say something I talked to the gentleman.
Let me, if I'm not mistaken- Bernie, hold on, did I get a motion and second for that discussion? Can I have that, vote, motion and second?
Second.
Alright, we got a second, I'm sorry, Bernie, it made me rush, that was my fault.
I'm, uh, did, did he not come down and talk to the city and got with Joe about the tree and all, and he ma- made a comment that he would pay to have it cut down? He'd mention that. The whole thing? He did make that comment. I don't have it in writing, but he did make that comment. So he's willing to pay to have it cut down, Mayor?
That's fine, that's fine, I wasn't aware, Joe didn't share that with me. And if that's the case, I would say let's table this, uh, until we get some information back from Joe and Mike and Mike on this.
Okay.
And then let's move forward. I'd like to have, entertain a motion to table to the next meeting. Got a motion to table and text till next meeting? Do you have a second?
Second.
We got a second, any further discussion?
Just one discussion, if, if we're talking just pruning, we don't, in the meantime, until it comes up at the next meeting, if it, if, if it's regarding pruning, there's no action that needs to be taken. The only time that action needs to be taken is if we're gonna remove the tree completely, so I-
We could, we could prune that limb all the way back to our property line.
Well, I, I guess, i- if for the safety of the vehicles, if that's what we need to do in the meantime, I think that's what needs to be done.
Well, I understand the trucks are hitting it.
Well, I understand the trucks are hitting it.
Yeah.
Coming down the, uh, road and hit it before.
I think we still need to take up that, what your point is, Bernie, but in the meantime, getting it, getting it, uh, where it's safe for the public.
Whatever y'all wanna do. We got a motion second to table.
That's all my discussion.
We'll have a discussion at next meeting back from, uh, Public Works Building Office, and, uh, we'll go far from there.
Okay.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? Uh, next we have City Hall Generator Repair. Uh, we've got, a motion second discussion?
Motion second.
We got a motion, a second discussion is, we've got some, some rust on top of the generator fuel tank. And Mike Dunlock from Building Office has been in touch with him. It needs to be, uh, have some, uh, rust inhibitor put on it and then coated with a special paint. Uh, and I don't know if you've talked to Joe or Mike about can the Public Works do this? Or is this some, all right?
Not discussed with them. Joe's been out of town and I hadn't talked to Mike about it.
I think we need to look at that, whether they can do it. And also, if you've got someone that comes in that you know is a painter that's capable of doing this, uh, get us information back to the board from Public Works and maybe some private contractors that can look at that and see if, how much it would cost.
Was this put in after the hurricane, or how old?
What?
The whole unit and everything?
After, after Katrina.
And so, are, we wouldn't have any warranties? I mean, they put in something that's not-
Twenty ten.
This is, uh, the bit, the, the-
Gas tank and all that, and it's just from moisture and just get-
It sits, it sits up, it's a big tank that sits up under the generator and the moisture, it gets up under there and it sits on that tank lid. And we've gotta do something about it, cuz if we let it leak through, we get fuel into the diesel. And then we've got a problem where we've got to probably replace the tank.
I was just wondering, like, who in the world would put something here on the coast that would-
No, that's just normal.
No, it's just worn. It's just worn because of, you know, the length of time there. So y'all all right with us coming back next meeting and, and having some more information on this?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries? Uh, next we have MDOT funding, uh, letter, Railroad Crossing Grade Improvements. Motion, second, discussion?
Motion, second.
Roll.
Roll, huh? You hungry, Mike?
No, 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 I'm talking about, let's get this project on.
Oh, I know it, all right.
So, the, my only thing is, there's, it says, we're responsible for any cost above what's approved. Uh, is there a limit that they can go above what's, like?
Yeah, I think we-
What they're looking at, and if I understand it correctly, is what we bid, what they bid to start with.
Uh-huh.
And now the change, or they, I'll say bid, what they estimated, what, three years ago now?
Mm-hmm.
And what they've got now, if they can't get anybody to come in with what they had estimated when we bid it out, that that's gonna be on the city of Long Beach.
Right, and my only concern is, I don't, I wouldn't feel comfortable going into a memorandum of understanding until we know what that total price, what if it's a million more? And we're already under contract?
Yeah, go ahead. Kenny, I know you're gonna claim it better than I could.
Is there a limit?
Yeah, I met with, uh, MDOT and, and the engineers that are handling this the other day. And, yeah, David Safin is here, and Mr. Steve Tweet.
Steve's here.
Um, MDOT has said that there's potentially more money to put towards this, but they're not going to commit anything until they see what the bids come in as. This is required to be approved before the PSN Assembly can be submitted to put the bids out. But MDOT says, we can put the brakes on this, y'all can put the brakes on this at any time. If the bids come in-
That's all, that's why I don't know if there's a clause that we can back out.
You can amend the scope, you can do whatever.
All right.
This just says, after you've contractually obligated to something, you are-
Good.
We can amend the scope.
And you, yeah, you can also draw back the scope.
Okay, good, that's all, that was my only concern.
Clawback claws in this.
All right, I'm good.
All right, we got, uh, any more discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? Next we have Cemetery Service and Fees, Alderman Frazier. Motion is second for discussion.
Motion.
Second.
All right, we got it, Donald, let me cut you off, buddy, go ahead.
That's okay, that's okay. Uh, so, it came to my attention, had a, uh, a citizen reach out to me cuz they lost a family member here recently regarding, uh, having an urn when a, uh, person passes, uh, buried with a casket. Excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm, uh, circling around. Um, so, with looking at that and talking to some people, I think we need to look at our cemetery ordinance, not only our fees that are, uh, they have not been updated in a very long time. Uh, we've expanded the, uh, the cemetery.
More plots.
Um, we're actually, as a city, we're losing money having Saturday funerals because we're having to pay, uh, uh, Public Works overtime because the funeral homes can't supply workers. So, I think as a city, we need to look at this because we're actually going in the hole on our charges. We're losing money on this, so-
That's not a good word to lose on the cemetery.
Yeah, you're losing money on the cemetery.
You're going in the hole.
Yeah, there we go. So, more than one person. So anyways, I just wanted to bring that up.
So do you want us to take this to a work session?
I, I would like us to look at the ordinance either through a work session or-
How about this, we email it out to all the Aldermen, and the next meeting we set a work session.
Sounds good. That's, that's my motion.
All right, that's Donald's motion, that's the second, uh, okay. Uh, any more discussion? All of us in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? All right, Donald, you up again on number nine?
Uh, I would, uh, make a motion that we approve the tri-party agreement that's represented here through, uh, SMPDD and the, with the city.
Okay, we've got a motion, do we have a second? Did we, did we get one over here on this side? Second by Timmy, discussion.
So, tell me what this is about?
So it's, it's the, it was in the packet there. This is the tri-party agreement with the city and the-
Sorry, it was not in the packet.
It's not in, it's not in the packet.
Came out via email.
Right.
From Stephen O'Meara.
Oh, the original one from months back?
No, it came out-
Okay, I didn't get it.
You and I both were copied in on it. Okay, I'll start over then. So, I, I received an email from SMPDD and Stephen O'Meara, let me just pull it up here. Give me one second, sorry.
I mean, can we just table this, since nobody's got it?
If that's, uh, I have a, I have a motion on the board, I can explain it, uh, to you, but if you wanna make a substitute and table it, that's your prerogative. But, uh, I'm making a motion that we grant this, uh, tri-party agreement, the five-year tax abatement for the sales tax, uh, three one seven Jeff Davis Avenue.
I thought we voted on this already. At another time, when they come in, the guy stood out here and appeared his case.
We took no action.
What?
We took no action on the property tax. This is the sales tax.
Hmm. I sure thought that was combined.
No, sir, they're two different things.
All right, what's the mind of the board then?
I'll make a motion, we table it.
I have a motion and a second.
Right, you got a motion, second, so you're gonna make a substitute motion?
Yes.
All right, do we have a substitute second?
I would like to see, I mean, you're, you're telling us this and we have nothing sitting in front of it.
This is not the first time that we've seen it, though.
So you're just bringing this back up, cuz your first motion said nothing about with this, the development. That's what your motion is about, tri-party with this development.
Tri-party with the SMPDD.
With the development down here, so that, okay, see, that, that's not on the agenda or nothing. It just says, uh, tri-party agreement, so-
Correct.
Might, might I recommend that, that possibly just get all the information out of what the agreement says? And let's get it out to all the other board members, and let's bring this back at the next meeting. Uh, cuz as I understand this, this, this puts the shovels in the ground and the construction to begin.
And this has been talked about since day one.
Uh, right, and I would like for us to be able to either put the shovel in or, or sadly, go on with a vacant piece of property there. So, that's been sacrificed already, so we-
I have a motion, I don't have a second to table.
To table, well, I got a motion, we got a second to table. Uh, any further discussion? Here none, all of us in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion?
Nay.
Nay, Donald, so, I don't need to do a roll call on that. So, thank you, Donald, I didn't, I missed you.
That's okay.
That's something, I got good hearing aids now.
You do.
So, uh, next, next we have, uh, request to purchase city property. Teresa, Teresa Borzick, uh, motion, second, discussion?
Motion. Second.
We got a motion, a second for discussion?
Discussion.
Uh, Ms. Borzick is asking us to, uh, grant her, she lives on the corner of, of Burke and Railroad on the southwest corner. She's asking us, due to the fact, and I'm gonna let Mike explain this as far as setbacks go, so that we can get information, and then we'll let Ms. Borzick speak. Mike, that, what is the required setback? I know, I know we've got a very wide First Street easement there.
Correct.
And it, she has an existing house there that is, has termites, as it explains in her letter. And she's already built a new storage or a garage. It looks good too, Teresa, I'm proud of that. Uh, but there's setbacks she's got to have after the house is taken down because it's so close to the First Street right-of-way. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay.
That, that right-of-way appears to be about fifty feet that the city has as a right-of-way on First Street. And if you look at the county map, the houses all the way down First Street to the other side of Nicholson have that setback, and there are several houses in there, the front of their houses are in that setback already. It's been there for a hundred years.
Right.
Eighty years. Her house, at this point, is right on that setback now. And to build a new house comparable size to what she has, she's gonna have to build right to that setback at this point. She's still considerably, probably thirty to forty feet off the road now. But that setback, that right-of-way for the city comes into all those properties so far, the houses are set way back.
I think when we looked at the corner, the southeast corner of Cleveland and First Street, there was, the house was like ten foot from that easement.
Right.
And, and, uh-
Direct into that easement.
Huh?
There's, right in, in between, uh, Cleveland and Burke, there's three or four, the Boy Scout Hut, and all are right close to that front easement.
Does, all right, knowing that, right now, have, have-
I know what he's talking about, my question is for Mr. Simpson, can we sell a piece of property without giving other people the option to purchase? Without putting it out for-
The, the answer to that is probably not, but, but my question is, is to Mike, it's, I'm, what I'm a little bit confused about her request, it was framed in the, in the text of, can she purchase that land? Wouldn't it be simpler to grant her a variance to encroach on the easement?
It, it can be.
But doesn't, we don't have to sell it, we can grant her a variance and allow her to encroach on the easement.
She can do that.
Does that have to go-
Much simpler and-
I mean, just going back with the-
That's where I wanted to go with the-
Going back with the conversations with the old fire department property, we have to put it out for bid and all that. I feel like we'd have to do the same with this.
I think there's a way to accomplish, providing her the space without selling anything.
Yes.
We could give her relief if we, if we give her a zoning exception there. Through planning and zoning? Huh? Through planning and zoning?
She, yes, go through planning and zoning.
Have to go through them or can, I mean, it's gotta come to us for final decision.
To get, to get the variance, I think she should.
And there is an application in my office from her contractor asking for this to the property line, not to, not to go into the right-of-way. So if that's, if that's what they choose, they can bring it before the planning commission to do, to come out in that right-of-way, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and then they could, and then the, what, whatever the ruling of the planning commission will come before this board.
Right, and Mike, can that come back to us at our next board meeting? After, whether, have time to go to the planning?
I think it'll be two meetings before we can get to that.
Can we not get it?
I think, I'm not sure when, cuz we have a meeting Thursday night. So our next meeting is gonna be the Thursday after y'all's, or is that in the Thanksgiving?
That's Thanksgiving.
Can you not, uh, amend the agenda?
I think, say, you need to amend the agenda to include that.
I'll try, I'll see tomorrow, I notify y'all by email in the morning.
Let's ask council, is that something they could do?
Yeah, they, they, it can be explained to them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that'd be the easiest way to resolve it.
Yeah, and that would, that would give Ms. Borzick what she needs to go ahead and move forward to be able to take her house down and get it and let the contractor go ahead and start. I mean, she's-
And I, I'll bring that up in the morning, I'll email y'all what we just, what's going on with it.
Much easier and cleaner to do that.
And I'll look at it in the morning, see what we need to do, I'll contact the contractor, get him in there, and we'll go from there. And I'll let y'all know tomorrow what's happening with it.
Is the board all right with that?
Yes.
I think so.
Okay, all right, Ms. Borzick, I think that gives you relief for right now without having to purchase, and we're looking at doing a variance to your property to allow you to move forward. And we will get back with you, we'll have somebody from the building office get back with you after they get something. It may take a couple days, but we're gonna have to wait till after that, that, uh, uh, meeting uh, on Thursday night, and then it could come back to us at the, our next meeting in two weeks from tonight. And I hope that will work well with your, your builder and us allow, allow you to go ahead and start as quick as possible.
Okay, I've got something here that might explain something. I drove this last- So it is?
Mm-hmm.
It's real close to my property. The new road is at the park. First Street?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yeah, all these other little lines. Railroad tracks. We have railroad tracks everywhere.
Yeah.
Whenever they did all that stuff, that's the reason why. Right, so, and then, and everybody was going around.
Okay, all right.
Then he had some, uh,
Gas meters, side of his house.
And we were afraid that I would blow up your back twice.
Okay, all right, so we've got it settled where we think we could keep you from having to, us having to advertise to sell that property, which could take a while, and making you have to bid on it and try to buy it, and hopefully you got it, to where we'll, we're trying to make, give you a variance so you'll be able to get that and continue to live on your property where it's at. Okay? All right.
Thank you.
Any more questions from the board? Thank you, Ms. Borzick. All right, we'll move on, uh, number eleven, amendment to public trust titleings lease. Uh, I had the opportunity to talk to our counsel today about this, he just got this yesterday. And I would request that, uh, a motion is second for us to table this to the next meeting to give him more time to digest what's going on here.
And I just, one, we talked about the, yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, we got a motion, a second?
Yes, Tom.
We got a motion, a second, any further discussion? Here none, all of us in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? Next, at number twelve, we got, uh, a motion, a second to discuss, Donald's? Do you remember what it was?
Uh, the-
Veterans Day.
Veterans Day.
Veterans Day Parade.
Yeah, that was for insurance?
Yes, sir. Uh, so, being that this is a cosponsored event by the, uh, city, the parade is, I would like us to waive the, uh, insurance requirement through the VA, uh, the veterans program and it'd be under the city's.
Okay, that's a motion. And Mike is already second and Timmy's put a third, a second, second on it. All those, any discussion?
I just, I wanted it to be official.
Would just like to say that we're looking forward to our Veterans Day Parade on Saturday. It's from ten until two o'clock. We have, um, a vendor that was going to give all of our veterans, um, hamburgers and hot dogs and a dessert. We have a band coming in and, um, we're looking forward to anybody that would like to ride in the parade. We have golf carts that are ready to take any veterans and we'd appreciate it and we'd love to see everybody out.
Yeah, and we have a, a large veteran community here in Long Beach. And we always enjoy the fact that we have them here and we could celebrate them and thank them for their service. I encourage everybody to get out and be a part. Uh, you know, don't, don't thank just the veterans, but thank their wives and their family too, because they sacrifice right along with them.
Yeah, and I would also like to invite, uh, on Thursday at nine o'clock at Long Beach Middle School, they do a Veterans Day assembly. So any active duty or any veterans that wanna swing by, it's, it's pretty cool what they do, so.
Wonderful program.
I, I second that part of that statement. That is a very good thing. Unfortunately, this year I won't be able to attend. I'll be under, in a machine doing a PET scan, so.
I'll sit in for you.
And, and Donald will be there. And I would encourage every one of you on the board, I know Bernie has been where, there with me before.
Been there before and it is nice.
It's a, it's a wonderful thing, so I encourage y'all to go. All right, uh, department business, uh, mayor's office. Uh, I hadn't been in long enough to have a lot of stuff. I'd just like to say to the board, uh, again, thank y'all for carrying on the business of the citizens. Uh, and I would like to say that on, uh, the ninth, that's, uh, of, of, uh, this month, uh, at eleven o'clock PM, uh, Poundville Road and the Cable Place by the canal, there was a grand bake, grand, uh, uh, opening. Yes, thank you.
Groundbreaking.
Groundbreaking. Thank you. My, my chemo's getting to me, y'all. For the, it's with JLB contractors, they got the, they got the contract to widen and deepen Canal One. And they will be starting the ESPY, working their way upstream, uh, just to the north side of Commission Road. And this is something we've been working on and waiting on for a long time. And we're, we're ready to move forward with this and would like to invite y'all to be there. Did I say COVID vein or chemo brain?
I think you said chemo.
A little bit of both.
They're about the same. Uh, okay, police department, uh, personnel, police department, uh, new hire, a step increase. Fire department termination one and new hire on one. Municipal court, education pay one, step increase two. And harbor, we have four step increases. I'll take these all at one and a motion of second.
Second.
And got a motion of second. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we got city clerk, the audit for FY twenty-three, letter of engagements. And this was with, with, uh, with Wolf, uh, McDuffie and Opia. Motion of second?
Second.
Got a motion of second? Discussion?
Just for my, this is the same group that's done it. Okay.
All right, my, and my follow-up question there, no one's the same group. How many years have they done our?
Five or six.
All right. I would recommend and I, that next year we go out to bid again. I think the, that the auditing rules establishes three to five years that you should, uh, advertise for, uh, auditors. And I think that's incumbent upon us to do this. So I think we look at, uh, next, next year to go ahead and start advertising. Uh, maybe we look at it in June, July?
Yeah.
Can we go ahead and add that? So we'll make sure we got that. Any more discussion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just add, uh, to that is, in the past, we've, I have asked this. And I believe they were the only ones or-
They were the lowest.
They were the lowest by several thousand.
Yeah, and we've-
I just wanted to make sure that was noted.
Yeah, so we need to, we need to keep that in mind.
Yep, but we still need to do it. We still need to go through the process. I one hundred percent agree.
We still need to go through that process, so. All right, uh, any more discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have, uh, the, the bond issue, uh, projection list. A motion of second with discussion?
Motion.
Second. On discussion?
So this is, we had talked about, Mayor, about, uh, all the matching funds that we have for all of these projects. And with our fund balance down to approximately five to six million, and this is gonna be totaling about, uh, three million. Uh, I think we need to look at, uh, maybe we, we, we are buying, we are debt free as of now.
Lord.
Look, yes, thank you.
Get that bond and debt and this off of us.
But if we go keep rolling with these projects, which are good projects and for the public to know, this, uh, commission in Twenty-Eighth Street, Beetline in Twenty-Eighth Street, Plandike Railroad and Jeff Davis, the phase one, two, and three of the sidewalks on Poundville Road, the south end of Mitchell Road widening, Dearman and Magnolia drainage, and then the, uh, public safety CAD server, uh, police department server, and body cameras and storage. We, we're totaling up at two million, seven hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars and a few change, a little change. So I would like to see us at least get a proposal or get Kenny to reach out and see what a bond, what our bar and power would be and a bond to fund these projects. Or either we're gonna have to cut back on some projects.
And I, I agree with that, but I think we need to really look at, you know, we've got some things we discussed tonight with the harbor. We may have to increase the funds on that. Uh, you know, we've, I think we've, uh, looked at something we may have to do with the railroad crossings. We may have some more. And I think if we, if we're gonna do this, we need to have an accurate estimate of, of the projects, not only now, but what future projects may we, I know we can't see into the future, but anticipate, but there's limits on, correct me if I'm wrong, if we do a bond issue, we've got to have what we're gonna do with it.
You have to be very specific.
Very specific. So if we do one and we're specific to the point that we advertise that within this bond, that we've got to do that and that only, that's to that. So I wanna make sure that we know that. And I would, you know, I would entertain, uh, you know, that, that we go ahead and, and, and look at this and make sure before we come to the board that we got clear answers. I mean, I'm talking to what little, to two things that I come across in my mind. Uh, somebody else is looking to the leaves on the other side of that basketball. Y'all share with us what y'all looking at. And, and let's understand what all that we possibly could need.
And I'll say about a lot of these projects on here, correct me if I'm wrong, a lot of these are from like two or three years ago, so we could probably-
Or older.
Double.
Yes.
That two point seven's probably closer to a four.
Yeah.
Easy.
Absolutely.
So I mean, a lot of these projects.
These estimates are old.
These aren't gonna cover, they might get us like six, you know, so that number's probably forty percent higher than what it is there.
So, what do we, I mean, so what are we saying? We going to-
I think we probably need to get an accurate estimate on what these projects will be now.
And I agree with that.
Or we're gonna be-
We're gonna be doing a bond issue and have to do another one. And I think we tried to cover, that's what I'm talking about, look, trying to look in the future. What else have we got here? What's the cost gonna be on them now? I think we got some things out there that maybe we could look at what future projects are coming in right now. I think we got something on sidewalks ready, ready to go out, David? We got something on sidewalk ready to advertise on Poundville Road?
Not ready to advertise, but we're, we're still wait, we're working with MDOT on it. We're getting close. I mean, we're still gonna have to acquire right away.
Okay, so we don't have that where we can move forward. And that's another one that's been going on for two years.
But we, that, we were told though, if a project started, we can't do a bond, correct?
You can only go back ninety days.
Okay.
So if you approve a bond today, anything that we incurred ninety days prior to today could be included in the bond.
And do we have, if we, if we do a bond, say, a matching for something that's not even started right now, like just say the harbor, can we use that money, can we hold that money for a year?
I think they said two years. I'll have to get clarification on that.
There's a good time frame there.
They give you time to spend it.
Look, I, just from experience with bonds, like you wanna make sure you've got all your ducks in a row before you start even thinking about it, because you only get one chance to play it out there.
Yeah, well, this, I mean, this is nothing new to the city of Long Beach as far as having bonds, but-
Yeah, I just think it's gonna be an uphill battle.
It is in a lo, since a long time. But okay, so you wanna substitute motion to table this? Do we get more information?
I, I think within that table, and that we need to put some, some information that, you know, we wanna look at everything that might come up, that we know are projects. Yeah, I mean, we've, we've done a lot of, you know, we're gonna have a twenty, twenty percent match. And, you know, and we approve it and then we get, we get awarded that grant and then we got that twenty percent match. And then we start scratching our heads like, man, we, we may be starting to get into our, uh, fund balance. We don't wanna do that. So, I mean, we need to think about that. We need to think about anything. And I think we got some, you know, uh, engineering, our city hall employees and, and different ones. And then, you know, then us. Uh, so I recommend we table it and if we need to, we formulate a, an updated list. And if we think we need to sit to the work session, let's sit, let's sit one later on. So.
We have a strategic planning coming up.
Might go be here, so y'all can hash that. So that's my motion.
We got a second on that? Did we have a second on that?
No, no second.
All right, we got a second from Tim. Is any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have, uh, fire department, you got anything?
No, sir.
Okay, uh, police department chief?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. I heard that. You even leaned up to get to me. Uh, next we have engineer and, uh, David Ball, uh, twenty twenty-two sewer repair, a motion of second with discussion?
Motion.
Second.
Uh, discussion, David, do you wanna explain to us how this is not gonna affect us?
Absolutely. The, the contractor on this is, definitely ran into some pretty significant material supply delays. They've also had some delays that are probably on their end. And they are offering in lieu of forfeiting liquidated damages that they would do thirty thousand dollars worth of, you know, kind of trade to you guys for that with no cost to you guys, uh, no cost to the city. And, um, and, and we think that's probably a good idea, to just get the free work out of them. And, uh, the other option is, the other issue that's at, 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 on the table here is that, um, the subcontractor that they were gonna use to perform their sewer service rehab no longer performs the kind of work that's specified. And they've offered to, um, come in with a different style of sewer service rehab. It's much more expensive and we would not get as much mileage. And kinda, we've been kicking around and even with Public Works and think that instead of doing sewer service rehab, we might want to take that contract amount and put it towards sewer main rehabilitation. And if that's, if those two ideas are acceptable to you guys, we would be kind of moving towards doing about another hundred thousand dollars worth of sewer main rehabilitation. With this current contract, it's not an increase in the contract amount. That's one of the key elements.
No additional cost.
Y'all are already, you know, intended to spend this money plus a thirty thousand dollar, you know, trade.
It's just, it's just a change of the scope, not a change of, uh, the monetary, uh, amounts of it. And it's, uh, that's up to board. I'd entertain, uh, our discussion. Let's, let's lay discussion.
Now, I think it-
Oh, you go monitor the free thirty thousand dollars worth of work?
Yes, sir. They, they, yes, sir, absolutely.
I mean, I think it's a win-win for the city.
Yeah, and they've actually already been doing other work that they've not even offered as a cost for. They just completely separate from the thirty. They're trying to be in our good graces for the delay that has happened.
I say we move forward in that direction.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with you, Timmy. Uh, we got a motion of second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, David, we have, uh, casting point, phase four, rear yard drain improvements. I'm gonna get a first and second and-
Motion.
Second.
All right, got a motion second. Uh, this, Donald and I visited this, what, two weeks ago?
Yes, sir.
And I'm gonna allow Donald to expand on, on what we're looking at here.
So I'll remind the board, uh, I brought this up, I, I, we visited a couple aldermen, uh, Pete, this is his ward. Um, we visited this in the, uh, backyard, the, uh, of the, the properties between, uh-
Crawford and-
And the Grove?
The Grove, thank you. Uh, there was only a fifteen-foot easement. There's houses there. They're trying to put fences in. And, uh, we didn't require it to be, uh, culverted, excuse me, I'm, I'm drawing a blank here. Uh, so we finally got everything done. Uh, we have approved it in the past. The final cost came out to be, uh, at twenty-five thousand dollars with, uh, the new concrete culvert boxes uh, that Joe recommends. And, uh, so basically we put it on here for reapproval through the board.
So this is just-
This is for ratifying-
Yes.
We're ratifying prior approval that y'all made through email.
Without the cost, so. So this is just, uh, uh, we go covert this.
We had a cost, we had a price.
Yes, I understood the cost was in there.
And have a, have a, uh, instead of having an open ditch is what we're doing.
Correct. Cause what you're having is,
All right.
To refresh this, what you're having is people are trying to, uh, put fences in their backyard. And right now they're, they can't because the city has no way to maintain the, uh, ditch, cleaning the ditch.
Yes, I understand it was approved with the total cost and then it, uh, JLB.
They overlooked it.
JLB, I'm not, maybe you did, I don't know. God knows I wouldn't know. So, any more discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, all right, next we have change order, David Rush, LLC Fire Station Three. Uh, motion of second, discussion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion on this? It's self-explanatory in there what's, what needs to be done. And it's a change order of about, uh, what was the change order amount? Thirteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars, the minimum. Uh, this is something that's split between us and the county. Any more discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public Works, Mike, you have anything?
We're good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Recreation, Mr. Bob, you got anything?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Building Office, Mike?
Good, thank you.
Good. Uh, Municipal Court, certi- certificate of completion, uh, Ms. Emma Ward, uh-
Just needs to be spread.
Hmm?
It needs to be spread in the minute.
Right, it needs to spread this across. We got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Spread this in the minutes? Okay. Got a motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, yes, thank you, Emma. Where you at?
Right there.
I'm, I'm behind you.
Stand up. Oh, you're.
She is.
She is standing.
That was too easy, George. Uh, David Harbor, here, you got anything? You good? Okay. All right. Courtney Community Affairs, what you got? Anything?
I'm good.
You're good. I've, I've been waiting to like get back into office to work with Courtney. And I'm so happy with what she's brought to us and to be able to be there day in and day out and, uh, work with her. And it's, I just wanna say thank you, Courtney. You're doing a great job.
George, can I address Courtney for a moment? Uh, I wanted to commend her, I, I, the trick or treat thing she put on the track?
Oh, yeah.
There was probably somewhere between seven hundred and fifty and a thousand kids who came through there. And, uh, she did that without a budget. And I want everybody to know that she did that without a budget, that we supply her. And kudos to you because, uh, I know there was a group of special needs kids that really enjoyed that. I have a special needs grandchild as well. But, uh, kudos to you for the effort you put into that. It was really nice. And I hope we can even get bigger next year with it.
We followed her about around six months, getting there, waiting for them to finish with their water bottle.
She ran out of candy, but we went and got more, so.
I would, I would say that, that next year, I would hope that we would find a way in our budget next year to help her. And I will certainly, I'm getting very low on my campaign funds, but I will certainly donate some funding to assist her in that. And, uh, it, it, like you said, it was a great, great turnout and, uh, and, uh, and after all that work, she still gets up and comes to work on Monday.
She cleaned it up before the night was over too.
Oh, yeah.
That took some work, so.
Courtney, thank you, hon. We appreciate you. All right, next we've got, uh, Darley Properties Four, uh, do we take these all forward at the same time, Steve? We gotta do them independently, all right. Number one is, uh, a public hearing, schedule it for three, 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 East Fifth Street, uh, assessed to John Sneed.
Those are pictures from today.
And some pictures of today, if y'all need to look at them.
Mike, is that where his, uh, is it Bog Circle or Driftwood? No, 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 where he, where the letter was sent, cause that's where his-
That's where he lives.
Driftwood, okay.
I talked to Dale yesterday about that. He has no, he can't get any contact with those people at all.
Has he been by the house?
It always comes back.
Yeah, one fourteen Driftwoods were.
I, I know them, I'll-
But they come back, Alderman, Brown?
No, I mean, but-
I'm just saying that he's not accepting his mail.
That's what I'm talking about, yeah.
Yeah, with Beth.
I'm gonna try.
Okay, so what do we want to move forward in camp?
Yeah, let's go ahead and move forward, yeah.
All right, we looking at, uh, what is it, December the twelfth?
Fifth.
Fifth, I'm sorry.
Is that a motion?
I need a motion of second.
I'll make a motion.
We got a motion of second, schedule a hearing for December the fifth. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have scheduled public hearing, one oh eight- Any opposed, motion carries? Next, we have Schedule Public Hearing, 108 Park Row, assessed to MSTREO LLC. Here's the, here's the pictures.
Second.
We got a motion of second, schedule that. Do we have any other discussion on this? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? Next, we have Schedule Public Hearing of Zero via Don Ray, assessed to James Knowles. A motion of second?
Motion.
Second?
Second, second.
All right, any discussion on this? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? Next, we have Schedule a Public Hearing of 612 Wright Avenue, assessed to Long Beach Trust.
Motion.
Motion of second?
Second.
Got a motion of second? Any discussion?
They were having a yard sale today.
The yard sale, okay. You drove by and seen them already.
Oh, every day.
I hadn't seen them.
Send that to Bernie.
Yeah, I'll get them all straightened back out.
I'll come pick you up next time I ride and look at them, Bernie. All right, we got a motion of second. Is there any discussion on this 612 Wright Avenue?
Just Wright.
Here and none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? Next, we have Assess Cleaning Costs, 24 Pecan Drive. If this is assessed to TLBB LLC, a motion of second?
Motion, second.
I need to know what we want to set the penalty at as well, please.
Well, we're gonna, we got a motion of second and discussion. We'll look at, I'd entertain a substitute motion for the penalty. And there's three, three options here on the penalty for cleaning. Is the, the cost was down here, what we, what it cost us?
Yeah, we paid, the cost to clean was nine hundred fifty dollars and twenty-seven cents. And the penalty can either be fifteen hundred dollars or four hundred seventy-five dollars and fourteen cents being half.
I'll make a substitute motion that we assess the max penalty.
Second. We got a motion of second?
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen?
If you need clarity.
Right. Fifteen hun, fifteen hundred dollars. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
I'm sorry, requires a roll call. It's a resolution.
All those in favor, Patrick?
Aye.
Pete?
Indeed.
Donald?
Aye.
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
Donald, I'm at Bernie.
Aye.
Oh, all right, motion carries. Next.
Mr. Mayor, before we go on from Derelict Properties, I, I just want to, under that heading, if we could come up with, because we're looking at certain properties that are repeat offenders, maybe if we can have Mr. Dale or the Building Department add any property that we do adjudicate, just give us some kind of notice, some kind of notice before the three hundred and sixty days runs out, so that when it comes up again and we find out, oh, we're, if we would have known a week ago, you know, we could have done it. But just notice that, hey, this was a adjudicated property and it's coming up on its one-year anniversary, you know, I think that would be helpful.
Well, we don't have.
Time-wise for every one of us. I think that would be good.
We wouldn't have to be going out there ourselves and checking on it.
Yes, sir.
But we would like all of our citizens, I mean, if you have an area that needs improvements in the, in the yards and the houses, please give us a call. I mean, we are doing our best to report these properties, but we also rely on our citizens to help us. So we might not check Facebook, but if you call us, we are, email us, we will see. So we'd appreciate help.
Absolutely. And Bernie, you're retired. You can get out and drive and look at all of them.
Right, I can. But I'll have to check my schedule, though.
I know. All right, Mr. City Attorney?
Mayor, I need a short executive session to discuss potential litigation.
All right, we got a motion, go in executive session, discuss possible litigation, got a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries?